This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening, everybody. It is March seventeenth. I am Chair Greg Hooksmo of the Gig Harbor Planning Commission and calling today's meeting to order at five P M. First order of business is roll call. Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Krosick.
Here.
Commissioner Bradbury.
Here.
Commissioner Soltes.
Here.
Commissioner Griner.
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Bennett will not be able to join us this evening. With the city, we have Carl DeCemus. Hello, Carl and Michelle Thomas.
Hello.
Love your new hairdo, Michelle. Looks great.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the agenda items. First item, of course, is approval of the minutes from our March second, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Does anyone have any corrections to those minutes? If not, I'm willing to entertain a motion.
Move to accept.
Second.
Okay, we have a move by Bradbury, second by Griner. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
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 That motion passes unanimously. Okay. The only item on our agenda this evening is transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, emergency shelters and emergency housing. And this meeting is about to reflect on the letter that we received from the Department of Commerce that you all, of course, have had a chance to review that's in in your packet. So I'll turn it over to you, Carl, and then we'll we'll take it from there.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Yeah, and a very, very brief sort of introduction to the to the issue here. I don't have a formal presentation for you tonight because I think the the memo kind of says it all. And I and I alluded to it at our last meeting as well. You know, the we were we were set to sort of move forward with a recommendation on the on the ordinance. And we received kind of a an eleventh hour letter from the Department of Commerce that has been provided to you. And so after staff reviewed that letter, we felt it made sense to bring it back, bring this ordinance back to the planning commission with a couple of recommendations for consideration, possible amendments to the ordinance. Prior to moving it, moving the ordinance forward with a recommendation to the city council. As a result of that, if these if these changes are or if changes are recommended by the planning commission, then we would need to hold another public hearing on the matter with the planning commission, open up a public comment period and have another public hearing before a recommendation can be drafted and moved up to city council. So what staff staff took the liberty of reviewing the letter and offering the two considerations in that are that are in the memo itself. And I'll just read those quickly. One is to amend the proximity restriction that we have in the current draft from a half mile to a quarter mile to ensure that the ordinance is consistent with state law and and will allow for a sufficient number of housing types to locate within the city. And that is sort of summarized from the letter that we received from Commerce. In in and and their their point being that there is work being done now on housing on a housing needs assessment. And I the 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 fear is that we could find that we are deficient in certain housing types and we might be limiting ourselves in being able to locate needed housing types within the city limits if we're if we are restricting, if we are too restrictive on where these can site. So moving changing from a half mile to a quarter mile would allow for some potentially for more of these to be able to cite within the city. A half mile is is kind of restrictive, given the the size of our city and sort of the the shape of it. And the second consideration is to consider amending the use table to permit transitional housing and permanent supportive housing in certain zones. We didn't offer zones. I know it's a little vague. But we would be interested in hearing the commissioners' thoughts if they're interested in look in in talking about that. And then we could go back and make changes or make recommendations in the draft ordinance that we could bring back for the hearing. And so rather than using the a conditional use permit for every housing type like we've like we have proposed to this point, we would change some of the zones for transitional housing and permanent supportive housing to to permit it. Chair, that is my that is my presentation or introduction to the issue. And I appreciate any any questions or any discussion that we need to have on the subject.
Okay, thank you very much. So thoughts from the commissioners?
No, given the state guidance, it seems a reasonable approach to me.
Yeah, Commissioner Krosick.
Okay, I don't have any problem with the amendment to go from a half mile to a quarter mile. But if we do require conditional use, doesn't that mean that the is a public process and that the neighbors would have the opportunity to weigh in on that? Whereas if we just allow it under the existing zoning regulation, neighbors don't have the opportunity to weigh in. In fact, would they even be informed that there's a possibility that there might be one of these facilities going in next to them? And lastly, as far as being deficient in terms of types of housing, I think every city and community in the Puget Sound area is going to be found deficient in terms of not having adequate low-income housing. I was reading in one of my news magazines that Seattle is now the most expensive housing market outside of California. Wow, I think this is going to be a problem we're all going to be looking at.
I you know, I I agree with you. I believe there would be significant pushback from the community. And certainly, we and any other city in the area is going to be deficient in various housing types. But given state law and guidance, it it's almost pointless to argue it. It is just a simple given fact now, whether or not the state commission considered these facts when they came up with the guidance, I can't say. But right now, we're faced with compliance.
If I could just offer Chair on one of Commissioner Cross's points about the elimination of C O P and permitting outright and and losing the opportunity for public input, in particular, if 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 one of these were to locate in the city and what what I could say to that is that it it depends. And from what I understand from Commerce, some of these uses sometimes just locate in a in a single-family home. You know, so you might have transitional housing, you might have a single-family home in a residential neighborhood that's a or even an apartment building, you know, that's existing. And maybe they are subsidizing the 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 group who is running the the permanent supportive housing or transitional housing, and those are the two types I'm talking about now, not the emergency. They may be sort of subsidizing the residents' rent and actually paying market rate in most cases for their rent for them to live there. And so you wouldn't really even know that you were living next door to to a permanent supportive housing or transitional housing in that sense. That's one. That's one thing. The other side of this, though, is that if you clicked on the any of the links that were provided in that letter and saw what was built down in Everett and that that was in the M R S C article, that's a large-scale permanent supportive housing building. And so something like that, if that were to be proposed within the city of Gig Harbor, it would require other permits which would allow for public process. So there would be CIPA, there would be site plan review. There might be, you know, there there could be any number of other permits depending on, you know, where they were locating this this building. So there would be public process. In other words, there would be noticing and there would be public process that would be involved with a large-scale facility like that. Or if it were sort of a cottage-style housing development that somebody came in and and wanted to use as permanent supportive housing or transitional housing, then that also would be going through sort of a public process. You know, I'm thinking of like the cottages at Rosedale Village over here. If they were to say this is going to be used for transitional housing, well, we would have gone through all of the same permitting that we already went through, which would have been public process and public noticing. And there would have been that sort of caveat in the record that this was going to be the use. So.
Okay.
So yes and no.
Okay, Scott. So it sounds like we pretty much got that covered. I mean, I I can't see that there would be any particular problem with the first illustration that you mentioned that anybody's going to have an issue with that. And it sounds like anything is going to be much bigger than that is going to be already handled. So I'm fine.
Yeah, I I think so, Commissioner. That's that's my that is my my read on the issue.
Yeah. I can add, I I didn't really understand exactly where D O C was coming from as I read through this and I was trying to filter out. They didn't use any compulsory language. And and so Mary Ryan Ryan Hold put her phone number down there at the bottom of her memo. So I called her today and had a very long conversation with her, trying to understand exactly what their concerns were. And so just some kind of highlights of that, although I I have to give you some substantial detail to to try to help you understand what I now understand better. But but all of she said everything in their letter is just suggestions. None of it we have to do. There there we can't get around the fact that the state has made this mandate, for lack of a better term, and they, you know, they do it's use the language shall not. So we shall not prohibit. However, they do allow city ordinances to be written that don't violate the spirit of the intent of the shall not. And you do notice that at one point in there, she used the term, you know, this could be a source of risk. And that's code speak for someone might sue you. And what what she indicated was that it would be unlikely for an owner-operator, you know, one of these nonprofit organizations or churches, whoever decides, you know, they might want to run one of these things to sue you, but then an activist group might have the the finances, you know, to just like Habitat for Humanity might come in and try to sue the city. So she just cautioned us to be careful in that regard. We talked about the fact that Gig Harbor is that is the from a population move-in perspective, by far the the fastest-growing city in the state, talked about the fact we've already exceeded, not only we already exceeded our twenty thirty growth goals, but there were also in on top of that twelve hundred houses in the pipeline approved by prior administrations that couldn't be stopped. And so and I asked her about, you know, what what are the services? Who who are the services expected to be for as we had discussed at our prior meeting? And she said that that has yet to be determined that there is going to be some determination in the future with this whole other thing that they're talking about, all of the income bracket housing things where Gig Harbor will be told what their fair share of all of that is to include these types of facilities. But it is her understanding that the intent would be that for all of these types of facilities we're discussing that that Gig Harbor would be not expected to be subsuming a bunch of folks from other areas, but but rather to service Gig Harbor, because I asked her pointedly. So if if someone comes in and and I saw, you know, I used the Everett example. I said, first of all, that Everett example is a great thing and that, you know, that that I could speak on behalf of the our planning commission that we want to make this work and get Carver. But but, you know, we have all these other things going on that we have to maintain the fabric and value and culture of the city and protect the current residents while we look out for the underservage served and underprivileged and you know, nobody wants people on the street. Nobody wants a victim of domestic violence not to have a place to go. But the that large relatively well for Gig Harbor-sized, large building that was built in Everett doesn't appear to me like it was exactly placed in the nicest part of town. And so it's a great concept and I I hope it works out. But my question to her was, so let's say that someone comes in, builds an Everett-type facility in Gig Harbor, and then other organizations find out, you know, gosh, Gig Harbor is a fertile field. You know, it was a super easy process there. And so we're going to come in and and put one in in Gig Harbor. And that was the the intent, our intent, what with the half-mile restriction. Because this is a new thing. No one knows the impact these facilities are going to have on neighborhoods. But as I said to her, any reasonable person could make the assumption that if these buildings became clustered and there were multiple buildings like this in a in a confined area, it would be reasonable to assume that it would denigrate the fabric of the community, the home values in that community. And and this is an unknown. And so I said, asked her, could we have more restrictive language in there now, maintaining our half-mile restriction with a caveat that because of all these other things going on and we can't predict the future, that we could have the opportunity to loosen those restrictions in the future. If as these things came into our community, we found them not to be problematic, we might be able to loosen up the restrictions. She says, absolutely, yes, you can do that. That you have to be able, the biggest thing is to be able to have it defensible. And and what she suggested, Carl, was a a staff memo, you know, that or purpose and intent language that that says, you know, staff member that says, this is why we're putting that restriction in, because we don't know what the future holds. And we're trying to balance these competing forces and our intent is in the future that we might loosen the restrictions. Once we see that that it's not creating a problem for the city, and she said that 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 would be an acceptable way to do that. Because my point was, if we just adopt the ordinance, we're never putting the genie back in the bottle with looser restrictions. And so I I appreciate her point that she makes in the letter that if a if a certain organization has put in transitional housing and they want to add additional resources that they shouldn't have to go that to have a restriction that they couldn't put additional resource building nearby there. Doesn't make sense because you would want that closely correlated or excuse me, close close in close physical proximity, if not in the same building. For all the reasons that we said, you know, you want the services close to the individuals, you want the it's easier for them to provide security, less likely to have people sleeping in tents outside of the facility. So, you know, her suggestion of putting the language that if it's the same organization that they should be able to add services without that half-mile restriction. So to me, that makes sense. And that that we maybe should consider adding the language that she she suggested in her letter that addresses that issue. So.
Could I ask about that that statement really quick? Because I I thought I had understood where where she where where they were going with that with that recommendation when I had talked to her as well. But then upon second blush, I felt like I didn't understand it because it says, no permanent supportive housing or transitional housing unit may be located within a certain distance of another property. Doesn't. And that's it. Just doesn't specify unless sponsored by the same governmental or religious or not-for-profit agency.
Yeah. So so I I'm not sure that that we may need to refine the language because I under the I see what you're the ambiguity of another property.
Yeah, I don't.
Our our thought was another like another one, another one of these types of buildings, another one of these types of facilities.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see. I I see where they were going with that. Okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah. So and and she she I also asked about protecting Millville and and historic downtown Gig Harbor. And so that we wouldn't have these kinds of facilities put right in the middle of our, you know, the heart of our city. And she said, yes, you can do that. That her recommendation was that in in a purpose and intent area, you you talk about those those specific areas and that they're not going to be permitted in those areas, even with a conditional use. And you know, talk about historic preservation of the city, you know, the tourism benefit. You know, economic development, you know, in all that kind of language that that I mean, because let's face it, you know, having having some of these facilities would certainly detract from one of the economic centers of of Gig Harbor if it were located on Main Street in historic Millville.
Kind of flies in the face a little bit, though, what the the House bill said, which was that we cannot restrict these uses in areas where we we allow single-family residential, multifamily hotels. I'd have to read the language exactly, but if we're allowing those uses in in downtown, you know, Millville or in or in the D B district, which we do allow hotels down there, then it seems like we would have to make an allowance for them.
Yeah, well, you you know, I I'm not professing to be an expert, Carl, after having a thirty-minute conversation with her. But I I was asking very specific questions with these things in mind and this, you know, I I you know, put quotes around, you know, her words. She also indicated that that to in those areas specifically to require conditional use. And that so anyway, maybe you might want to call her again and and with your, obviously, much more extensive knowledge of of how it works and you know, without me as a half-assed mediator. Interpreter.
Well, I would say you got a lot of information out of that thirty-minute phone call. I mean, far actually, I mean, I I got a lot of explanation when I had my discussion with her about their concerns with what, you know, with what we were doing, but I didn't get any sort of advice like you're like you were getting there. So I I mean, if we wanted, if the planning commission was interested in in going down that road of trying to restrict these in certain zones in some manner, but with some kind of caveat around historic preservation or economic development or you know, neighborhood character or something like that, we would definitely have to call and and have a discussion with Commerce to 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 check that out and with our city attorney as well to make sure that we're on, you know, on on good legal ground. But I mean, I that's that's great. I mean, I think all of what what you learned there is all really, really interesting information.
Yeah. And and you know, she a couple of times she said, you just, you know, you got to document this stuff in the staff report. You know, anything that that seems to, you know, perhaps be inconsistent. And and that she seemed comfortable with that. And she, of course, she said, and your city attorney needs to be comfortable with it, you know, also.
Yeah.
So but I was encouraged by your stuff. I I I didn't realize there's a couple of things we learned that I learned that, you know, we had understood that the emergency shelters would not be used for a FEMA, you know, a natural disaster type of thing. And she's, you know, in her letter, she does reference that. And she said, well, you can just put language in your ordinance that says, no, they're not to they're not to be used for that. So and then the other thing that, you know, there's a couple of groups there, like she talked about. We talked about adult family homes. She said, are there adult family homes in Gig Harbor? And I said, yeah. And and she said, you know how many? I said, I don't know. I I see them around. Mostly, I know of them because I have some friends that own own them. And I'm not sure if you all are familiar with it, but basically they are just residences that that people have purchased that that are literally someone's was someone's home. They will serve anywhere from four to six clients. Oftentimes, it's memory care or elder care. And there's, you know, a central kitchen and and everybody has a bedroom. And for all intents and purposes, no one knows what goes on inside of there. And and it's quiet. Now, that's obviously different than having a group of six teenage kids, all of whom are transitioning out of foster care. And the reason that they were in foster care is because they had terrible childhoods. And so these are, you know, high-risk kids that they're trying to transition back to or into adulthood. And and getting into permanent housing and and try to set them up to be more successful, but that, you know, they're at-risk kids. It that's different than a group of six women who have ran run from their violent husband. And and I say women because that's overwhelmingly the most common thing. And and so you have six women there whose husband might come, you know, to to finish the job. And I told her, we, you know, we I I understand when someone feels like it because I would feel the same way if I had three choices. Do I want six foster teenagers living next door to me? And and the house that used to be owned by the Joneses or and do I want six women escaping domestic violence, whose husband might try to track them down? Or do I want the Smiths to move in with their, you know, two kids and a dog? Well, I think that's an easy answer for everybody. So but that's where the law comes in and says, we all have got to pitch in and make this work because we can't just flat out prohibit them. So anyway, that's that is the sum of our conversation.
A couple of comments if I could, Greg.
Of course.
Regarding the incremental add-on of a facility of like other additional things. I'm not a big fan of that idea because if if you have a facility like that, you're kind of like asking the neighbors to take one for the team. And then if you want to add more of that to the neighborhood, you're asking them to take another one for the team as opposed to spreading it out across the community. So I understand that some logistical things that make sense like that, that you are concentrating impacts on the same neighborhood by doing that. I also noted that in the letter from the Commerce, they had a paragraph that said Gig Harbor will have one emergency shelter and one emergency housing facility. Now, did I pick that up correctly, Carl? Is that what they said? And is that what they Now, did I pick that up correctly, Carl? Is that what they said? And is that what they meant that? We only going to have one of those two facilities, one of each of those facility in the community?
That's the way we wrote the ordinance, Commissioner Soltis, so that there would only we would only allow one of each within the city limits.
Within the whole city.
Right. Correct.
Okay. So they were they were agreeing with us then.
Well. Uh, let me look at their letter really quick. I think I if I remember correctly, I thought what they were saying was that if we do that. Yeah, here. So proposed section. No more than one continues to operate emergency shelter and no more than one continues to operating emergency housing facility shall be in operation at the same time in the city limits. And then they say. This language may limit your ability to plan for a shelter. And the housing that may be needed for people who need a place to stay in an emergency, such as those fleeing domestic violence, veterans in need of support services or other emergencies, such as natural disasters. And at the beginning of that bullet point, they are making the point about um. The fact that there's this um. This work being done by Commerce and the counties. To provide projections of housing need by income band. For all of these and which will include these special housing types. And that each city is going to be required to accommodate. A certain number um potentially. Over the next twenty years. And so that's something that will go. Into our discussion. When we get into the comp plan overhaul. For twenty twenty four. So a lot of this work is sort of, you know, sort of. Overlapping a little bit here. Um, in our in our preparations for, you know, what the state is going to be want asking us. To do uh within our within our compliance.
Is the city going to be involved in those studies? I hate to have just the state people come do it and say, here's the answer without us having a. A role to play.
Yeah, there will be, Commissioner Soltis. There's going to be um some workshops that are going to be coming up. Uh, and so there will be opportunity for cities to get involved in that uh in that discussion. Um, uh, they Commerce came and gave a brief. Overview uh at a recent growth management coordinating committee meeting. And said that they would be. Um, reaching out or that they would have a workshop schedule coming out soon. I have not seen it yet.
If another question, Carl, if if it's simply a permitted facility. Uh, do they need to? Follow the performance standards? Is there some kind of wicket they have to go through to say we we even though it's permitted, we still have. Provided all the information you need to uh ensure that we got our performance act together.
Oh, meaning in the ordinance where we talk about the occupancy agreement and things like that?
Yeah, we had we had some uh sort of performance. Standards in there. Will they still have to meet those if it's simply permitted?
Well, that's it's a that's a very good question. That's something that we would have to consider, I think, because if we don't have a. An outright permitting mechanism for these, then. That occupancy agreement would not necessarily be associated with anything. So we would. You know, we may, we might have to amend the ordinance. Such that, you know, it only applies to. A conditional use permit. Not necessarily to something that's permitted outright. So that that is something that we would have to. We would have to dig into a little bit when we. Um, amend the ordinance if we were to make those if we were to make that change to the use table.
C-TAC, I went I went and looked at their their language because they kind of referred us to them saying. This is probably a better way to do what you wanted to do. It's kind of what way I read it. And they have conditional use uh. Uh, procedures for both the for all four types of housing still in there.
They do.
Um.
They they also have some permitted. So if you look at their ordinance, you know, they they show emergency housing, they show um. They show that it's permitted in a certain zone, the UM. And then in the next zone over in the UH, they say that it is permitted. And then they have a note that's associated with the permit. Uh, with the permitted um option. Of the use. Uh, and then they also then they say slash conditional, and then they have a. Um. A note that's associated with the conditional use as well. So in some cases. I guess they're saying um. It depends. It could be it could be permitted or conditional depending on whether or not they meet that note, that note provision. So. In the in the instance that I just brought up. For the permitted um emergency housing use in that zone. It would be allowed only as part of a permitted religious use facility accessory, not to exceed twenty percent of total building square footage. Providing operating plan is approved. Ensuring there are no significant traffic or noise impacts to neighbors. And the health and safety standards are met. And then for the conditional use. For emergency housing in that same zone, it says, see. SMC fifteen four sixty five three fifty supportive housing standard. So then they refer to another code that would. Um, that would regulate that as a conditional use in that zone. That's an interesting way of looking at it as well.
Well, the way I read it was the performance standards that they have in there. They have a quite extensive set of performance standards. They apply to all four kinds of housing. So I guess my question is. If you automatically permit something. How does it? How does then the performance standards get applied? To both the permit as well as the conditional things, but. I I've said enough on that. I'll shut up for a while.
Yeah, it you know, I. The other thing I'm thinking about is we're having this discussion is. And and reflecting back on our previous discussion that we had on this issue is. At least in my mind, as we were thinking about this ordinance, I envisioned. Uh, a building like they just built in Everett. Um, that someone would come in and build a large facility to try to and and. To try to accommodate as many people as possible. And we had the discussion that how many homeless people are there in Gig Harbor and. Nobody really knew, but Chief UC had a number in mind and and um. Um, John had some input of of some folks he seen up, you know, in a. In a tent encampment at Canterwood, but the and and Mary acknowledged that no city has this data because nobody knows and it's a problem. Um, but. Um, apparently. The reality is most of these are done on more of the adult family home model. Um, where they come in and they they take over what used to be a residence in a residential neighborhood. And as long as everything goes well. Um, nobody knows what's going on. And as Mary jokingly said, someone might think my that family has a. A lot of teenage kids. You know, as they see. Four or five or six teenagers going in and out of the house all of the time. So that's that's the utopian version of it. Um. And certainly any, you know, teenage kid can get in trouble and cause problems. Um. So so I found it interesting and and she said it's not likely. Um, and this was during our discussion of the Millville and, you know, that. Where admittedly, at this point, everything's really expensive. She said they're not generally going to move into those kinds of places because. That they can't afford to buy those houses. Um, so so they tend to behave like the adult family homes. And if you're. Familiar with them in in Gig Harbor, they are up and around the outskirts. Um, up in Gig Harbor North and um they're not in the downtown area, at least unless they've been here for quite a while. Um, and so she said they 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 tend to behave like that. And um, I think the reason people don't build things like an Everett is because it's really expensive. You know, that's a huge upfront investment. Um, and and many of these organizations don't have that kind of money. Uh, you know, to do that. So that was enlightening to me and and um. I I think that that. Is where she feels a half mile restriction. So if. If you have. A permanent or transitional home or permanent supportive home and. And there's only six people you can serve and the the next one has to be a half a mile away or greater. That's where her concern is, but. I I'm still more comfortable restricting it more upfront and loosening the restrictions later on. Because um with the logic that this is an unpredictable. Um, sort of situation. It's brand new program and nobody really knows what's going to happen with it all. And not just in Gig Harbor. I'm talking really anywhere in the United States.
Um. I I I really quickly, Chair, if I could address Commissioner Soltis's um thoughts on, you know, if it if it's a permitted use. How do we ensure they meet the performance standards? It's a it's it's a really good question. Um, you know, and there's a maybe a couple of ways of handling it, I suppose. Um, and and that is one to create a new permit type. And. And a new set of uh. You know, a new a new application essentially. And standards for processing that application. So there would be some cost involved. Uh, the other way I think might be through, and I don't know for sure about this, but through maybe through the business license. And I I don't know. And hadn't really considered this. Obviously, if they come in and they build something like uh. Commissioner Hooksmo was just talking about, like they have an Everett or if they're coming in and building that large expensive building. That facility is going to require a business license to operate within the city limits. They're operating a business, obviously. Um, if somebody is operating a transitional. Uh, housing out of a an existing apartment in an apartment building over on Soundview or something. I would they need a business license? To put somebody in that apartment? You know, I I don't I don't know that for sure. I see Michelle thinking about it. Michelle's our business license guru, but I don't expect that she would have that answer either. Um, so that's a question that we would have to explore, but there might be something there. Uh, if there was a requirement for them to have a business license. Then that could be. Maybe the hook to ensure that the performance standards are met. And I also appreciate, Chair, your thoughts on um. On maintaining. Sort of, you know. Higher restrictions now. Uh, and and then making some admission within, even within the whereas statements within our ordinance. That, you know, the city recognizes that we are, you know, being restrictive. Because of such and such and such, but we acknowledge that, uh, you know, we'd like it to be acknowledged that the city would revisit this. Uh, after, you know, after more is known about these types of uses and potentially loosen up the, you know, loosen up the restrictions a bit. So I mean, that could certainly be done. And and of course, we would get. The city attorney involved in that discussion. So I I think that I think those are um both really poignant. Ideas.
Isn't the problem when you start to get larger facilities? So. If we started with like the the homes in the neighborhood with six people. I I think that's seems to be a lot safer proposition. And I I wouldn't even have a problem with, you know, a quarter mile with those particular things. They're small. They're relatively self-contained. I think where the problem comes in, when you start adding large facilities to the to the game board. That's when people start to get. Really worried and nervous and you've really got to be careful about. Community integrity and things like that. I think that's where the big number where the numbers are large is where I think the concern should be. And I don't know if we couldn't do two things. We couldn't split the 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 distance requirement. To be. Uh, you know, sure, smaller for smaller facilities and larger for the big ones.
Commissioner Griner.
Sorry, I'm having tech issues today. Um, so. When Carl was taught and you were alluding about um adult family homes. Um, do adult family homes have a certain type of permit?
Carl.
Question. Give me one moment to look up.
I I just, I mean, it seems like, you know, how we're handling that might be an interesting thing to consider in looking at this. And I just, I live. A block away from. Two adult family homes and probably three blocks away from the third one. Um, so they're they're in very close proximity. Um, and I'm wondering if. In this scenario where there already are these adult family homes with multiple multiple people living in them. Then should that be considered part of the distance for how far apart they are? Makes, you know, there are already houses that house more people than they normally should. In my neighborhood or in proximity to my neighborhood. I'm just using that as an example. So if if we were thinking of, you know, some transitional housing. We already have those. I mean, shouldn't that be a consideration as well? And I don't know. I'm I'm just asking the questions.
Yeah, I think it's a good point. You know, these are it's a similar.
Animal.
Yeah, it's a similar type of housing, especially when we're talking about permanent supportive housing and transitional housing. And I'm sure. Um, Commissioner Hooksma picked up on this too in his conversation with uh with Mary. That she was in when my in my discussion with her, she was kind of likening it to that as well. You know, it's like you. You don't. They don't have any sort of outward appearance necessarily. Uh, if they're housed in a in just a single family home or a duplex or. Uh, an apartment building or something, you might never know, you know. And so just like with an adult family home. I mean, th- those are maybe a little more obvious even in some cases, but. Um, but I get your point. That we don't have any kind of a separate permitting process for. Um. For adult family homes or living independent living facilities or assisted living facilities or skilled. Uh, nursing facilities. Uh, if those are, you know, housed in like a single family home or, you know, something like that. Now, if they were a a larger, you know, an assisted living facility can also be a really large facility like we have over, you know, near Mallard's Landing or something like that. Um, where, of course, there's a lot of permitting that goes into putting something like that there. We we also um for adult family home, we we permit them in almost. Every zone. Except it's conditional in the DB, the downtown business district. It's not allowed in the public institutional district. The employment district. Or the B, the PCD um. Business Park District. But otherwise permitted oh nearly across the board.
They also require business licenses, right?
They do.
Um.
I think, Michelle, am I right or am I wrong?
Tax. Well, if they're a tax exempt nonprofit organization recognized by the state of Washington and the US government, they are exempt from having to have a city business license.
Ah.
But as a practical matter. I don't know that most of them are. My impression is that most of them are profit-making enterprises, businesses.
Yeah, it depends on how they set themselves up.
Is that for adult family homes you're talking about, Michelle?
No, that's. That is exemptions for city business license. Um, a tax exempt nonprofit organization. Is one of them. Um.
Okay.
The the point I'm making is that. In my experience, they aren't. They're businesses.
Yeah, for adult family homes, I would say that's largely true. I mean, I've I've um had some experience with those. Uh, during my life, uh, you know, family members and things and and they're definitely for profit. You know, somebody owns that house and they've they've converted it basically to an adult family home for for the purpose of making money. So. Are you you could end up with both. Right? So to Michelle's point, if it were a nonprofit and and we and and according to. Uh, Department of Commerce, a lot of these. Are run by nonprofits um who raise the funds to pay. For pay the rent essentially. On those apartments uh and or houses and things that are um. That are being utilized as a permanent supportive housing or a transitional housing. And she said in in her experience. That a large majority of the ones that that she uh had worked with. Were just that. They were either apartments in existing apartment buildings. Houses, single family homes or duplexes, triflexes, that kind of thing. But they don't have to be.
You know, I I'm curious. Um, Commissioner Griner, I I I'll put you on the spot a little bit, I suppose, that the part of the reason that. You hardly know that there's adult family homes is is. Who is the population inside? The these are. These are people that are transitioning, but they're not transitioning. These are people that are transitioning, but they're not transitioning back into the community. They're transitioning out of the community and, and spending their last days and oftentimes completely. Or, or, you know, very incapacitated. They're not in that, they're, they can't live independently. That's why they're in there. That. How would you think? You might feel if those same three homes were occupied by eighteen. Nineteen-year-old kids transitioning out of foster care back into the community or. Eighteen mothers with their. Child or children escaping domestic violence, I. And you don't have to answer. It's a bit of a rhetorical question, but the point is, I think that the impact is, would be significantly different.
Well, I think you. I, I think you made the point that we just don't know. We don't know what the parking situation would be. Whether each of those transitioning folks would have a car and all the rest. So it, it's, it's a different situation and we just don't know.
Well, and I just wanted to say, I mean, of, of two that are literally a half a block from me. Directly across the street from each other. One of them has a large parking area and people are coming and going all the time and there are people milling around. So one of them, you know, it's very obvious that there's some type of. And I'm going to use the word business going on there. The other, not so much, but then further up the street, it's again, obvious that there's a lot of cars and things. Involved with it. So I, I wouldn't say that it's not obvious what's going on there. So.
Well, that, I. A couple other thoughts that are, you know, coming back from my conversation. That, that. And it wasn't the letter, but it was just a brief thing. The, the, on the. We had, we had talked at our last meeting about, you know, how do we know that these, the, the people running these places or involved with these places would have their. Licenses? Are they, you know, do they have their RNs? Do they, are they psychologists dealing with? Dual diagnosis people who have homelessness and, and drug addiction, you know, problems and so on. And. I think I at least felt reassured that, well, if they have it, if they're running a big enough enterprise, we would kind of make the assumption that that was the case. When you. Cone this down to a smaller situation, the staffing becomes like at the built family homes. And I know a lot about them because we were putting my mother-in-law in one and we went and saw. Six or eight different one of them and, and different types and, and. I felt like I needed to go in and talk to the people and meet the staff because I didn't know what their qualifications were. They said, you know, they were all CRNAs or RNs or whatever. But I had to try to figure out what the staffing things were so that I felt comfortable as, you know, as the family member. So. So that concerns me a bit on. Because I think it is a different beast all of a sudden to me. Because the staffing ratio would be different and the total number of staff could be very minimal, especially overnight. On the positive side though. The. They do have to go through a screening and application process to get into any of these kinds of facilities. And so there is. In other words. Some poor kid who's been, you know, had a terrible family and not done well in foster care and is, you know, a long. Crime sheet probably isn't going to end up in, into, in one of these transition facilities. In a residential neighborhood in Gig Harbor. So. Anyway.
You know, and staffing's an interesting point too, because, you know, I, in, in my discussion with the Department of Commerce and, you know, I didn't, I didn't understand that these could just be in a single family home or in an apartment or something and I. And when I started to understand that during the discussion. I said, well, that's interesting. So how does that work with staffing? You know, where does, where's the staff then in that case? And the answer was that in many cases, at least for supportive, for permanent supportive housing or transitional housing. There is no onsite staff. The staff is a phone call away. So, you know, she, she relayed to me an experience of hers where there was some permanent supportive housing. And it was just a house where. Four or five women lived and the only support that they needed. In this case, was that they wanted, they went grocery shopping together and so she, they would, the, the service who was paying for them to be there would come and pick them up and take them to. The store. And that was pretty much the, the support that was offered in that case, other than. You know, a roof over their head and a nice, you know, good place to sleep and, and, and relative safety and things. So. You know, I can, this, this stuff can come in so many different forms that it makes it. Really difficult, I think. And that's why when you read the ordinances, you know, that we go around and look at a lot of ordinances. They're kind of all over the place. You know, everybody that's, that's tackled this has kind of come at it from. All kinds of different directions and, you know, it's a, it's a. A bit of a sticky wicket in, in that sense. So I, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not helping at this point, but I'm just trying to relay my. What I've heard in hopes of. Maybe helping, helping the discussion a bit. Somewhere.
No, I, I, I would offer a comment that it boils down to what many have already said is, is we just don't know. We're talking about transitional housing, for example. It, it's very common, not in Gig Harbor, but in other areas. Where, where you might have immigrants coming in, for example, people from Mexico. Who might live two or three families to a house. And, and we don't have any regulation of that particular kind of scenario. What we are talking about is. Diversity in communities that we have to manage in some way. So that the, you know, everybody can live in peace and harmony. Without one group or another. Impacting that peace and harmony that the others enjoy. In a given community. That would be one reason why. I, I like the provision of not having. As Commissioner Gray indicated, two or three of these kinds of transitional facilities. On the same street. That they, they should be moved around a, a little bit so that. One, one type of use doesn't dominate the others to the detriment of those. If I'm making any sense.
When our definition of adult family housing is one, but not more than six adults who are not related by blood. So it, the definition of adult family housing does limit how many people they can have in there.
I, I would, I would add to that, Michelle, that everyone that I toured, these are not big homes. So this, these are not three thousand square foot homes that they're putting six people in. I was, I was, and, and I, I don't mean to imply, there was nothing wrong with the accommodations. But, but. The, the, the square footage proportion is, is not huge.
Two adults to a bedroom?
Sometimes. Actually, most commonly.
So I guess, you know, kind of some, some of the questions sort of comes back to. Yeah. And, and I. You know, we've, I feel like we've. Weaved around a little bit here in, in the discussion about, you know, whether or not. The commission is comfortable with the, I guess, with the ordinance as written. Or if we want to make some. Amendment to it based on what we've heard from the Department of Commerce. And I'm kind of hearing. I'm, I'm hearing a little bit of both, I guess. So and maybe, maybe there's no decision that can be made at the moment. As well. And that's, and that's fine if that's the case. And. You know, staff, staff could certainly be directed to go. Do a little more. Digging and or put together. Put together some proposed changes and bring those and bring them back or, you know.
I, I would say that because of the narrowness. Of our city limits, I would be okay with reducing the half square mile. To something less, a third of, a third of a mile or, or even a quarter. But no less than a quarter.
Commissioner Krosak.
Yeah, I would also be okay with this, but I also, I wanted to ask Carl, do we have any time urgency on this situation? I know we've adopted an interim ordinance. Does that expire or limit out at a point?
It does expire. So we had six months essentially from the time that we passed those interim controls, just like the short-term rental moratorium. And they're both sort of expiring at the same time. We're actually. I have ordinances drafted, sitting on my desktop in front of me right now that need to be finished. To extend both the interim controls and the moratorium. For another six months. And we are taking that to city council on the twenty-eighth of this month. For adoption. So that the, the, the idea now. Is to, to extend. I mean, we, we kind of have to extend because we're kind of at, we're at the end of our time limit here. By statute. So. So in answer to your question, Commissioner Cross, we, we are and we're, and we won't be here pretty soon. I guess we've got time if we, if we want to, to chew on this some more for sure. Now, I, I say, oh, sorry, Chair.
Um, why, why don't we? Why don't we do this? Why don't you? Screen share and pull up her letter and let's just. March through her various paragraphs. Or. We can just take your two recommendations, your two specific recommendations and, and discuss and make a decision. Just about those two recommendations unless you feel Carl that based on what you've heard here tonight that you. Feel like you need to go back and, and perhaps. Suggest some other changes or additional language or.
I, I don't feel that, that need necessarily. I mean, I think most of the questions that have been coming out of this discussion are, are relative to what we found in the letter, other than the, the permitting. Question. But even that's relative because, you know, we're talking about should they be outright permitted or should we continue with the conditional use for all of those uses? And, you know, as staff has stated, we've recommended that. That we do consider. Outright permitting of a few, in a few zones, but I think. Commissioners brought up some very good points that if we do that. That could have some. That could have some ramifications. That means we may have to make some other changes to the ordinance in order to. Ensure. That the performance standards are somehow still met. So I, that, to me, that was a, a really good point that came out of this discussion. So. You know, in that, if, if, if the commissioners wanted to. Explore the option. Of. Allowing some of these to be permitted outright in certain zones. I would say that. Staff would have to go back and definitely do some work. To look at what zones we would recommend. Changing from conditional to permitted and also what. What effect? That would have on the ordinance as it's currently written. And then the other. Issue at hand here, and I think, you know. Well, two others. The other one is the quarter mile versus half mile. It sounds like the commissioners are kind of up in the air on whether or not that would, would make a difference. I think I've heard a few say that they're, they're supportive of changing it to a quarter mile. Staff is obviously supportive of that as well. So maybe that's a, maybe that's not, maybe that's not an issue. Making that change. And then lastly, and here I will bring this up. As you suggested. So this is the letter. And so this was the other issue that we kind of started to discuss a little bit. And that's this language that they recommended. Be included. In the ordinance.
Yeah, I like the idea of really working off the staff recommendations with that addition that Carl just mentioned here. About possibly consolidation of a campus type situation if we have that. I, I think we've got a lot of other issues that we are going to have to deal with this year. And we can't. Can't really just keep going on, on the same issues all the time. And I don't want to leave. People that might be considering this or dealing with the short-term rentals in limbo for an extended period of time. I think we need to make some decisions and move on.
And, and just to that point, Commissioner Cross, and you mentioned that this would be sort of a campus type. Development that this, this quote would be referring to. And that's how I initially read it as well. But now, after what Commissioner Huxman told us earlier and during his discussion with Commerce, I understand that. This wouldn't necessarily be a campus. You could, what this is saying is that this sort of supersedes in some ways the. The quarter mile or half mile limitation. So that you could have a house. Where you have a permanent supportive housing. And you couldn't have another one right next door, but you could if it were the same. If it were sponsored by the same governmental, religious or nonprofit, not-for-profit agency. And so then to Commissioner Bradbury and Commissioner Griner's point. You could end up with a lot of these in one area if they were all sponsored and they wouldn't necessarily, if they were all sponsored by the same organization and they wouldn't necessarily have to be. It wouldn't necessarily all have to be on the same parcel. They could be separate parcels.
Yeah, I like the concept, but I think maybe we might want to put a caveat there that would protect, that would prohibit. Somebody having every other house in a block. Be part of a, a campus type facility.
I, I'm not comfortable with that concept as you could probably surmise. I, I would think if. That what's described here were the case. We would want to have. Some kind of additional review of that. Especially in the conditional use area where we would have that opportunity to evaluate that kind of a process. And program.
Well, we might, we might be able to do both. You know, I think that, I, I think what the bottom line is that, that, let's say they. Someone open, you know, has one of these family homes and they have. They're providing support services for veterans. That have, you know. Have unstable housing situation. And then they want to. You know, that's going well. And then they, they've raised money and now they want to add a job training program and maybe there's. Out in the garage, you, you know, on the same property. They, they want to open, you know, whatever, a computer training center or. You know, a woodshop training center or, you know, whatever the case may be. That's kind of what I'm envisioning, what Mary seemed to be talking about when she was. Suggesting this language so that it, it would be the same organization. Adding on to the current services provided. To have. More of that complete wraparound support. For people that are, are transitioning from homelessness. Domestic violence or, or foster care, you know, back into a more stable housing environment.
I think that's a good concept and would, would everybody be comfortable with saying that maybe we limit this to not more than two structures?
I. I don't like that idea. And, and here's why. A typical single-family residence community. You, you know what to expect. There's going to be a house, a garage, et cetera. But if. And, and one of the reasons that the. The family homes have been successful is that they don't expand. They, they stay within the limits of the neighborhood. They, they don't grow. They don't. Add on facilities. They're limited to six occupants. That's it. So I would not be in favor of. Permitting. Expansion that might take forms or shapes that. expansion that might take forms or shapes that we can anticipate. I, I think it could be inconsistent with what we expect in a typical single-family residence, that community.
Good point.
I, I would just throw a monkey wrench out here that we would need to consider, and that is particularly here in Gig Harbor. We have a lot of communities that have CCRs in place that are, that would control a lot of the activities we're talking about, particularly, for example, with some kind of a use that would require a lot of additional parking, for example.
Right.
Yeah, in that, in that vein, you know, the, an HOA certainly can can have more, they can have less restrictive language in their CCNRs, but they really can't have, you know, more restrictive language than what, you know, what our Gig Harbor Municipal Code would allow for. But they, but they can restrict, they could restrict use in some cases. So you're, you're right on that, Commissioner Bradbury, that, you know, short-term rentals are sometimes not allowed within a particular HOA. I'm sorry, I said that backwards. They can be more restrictive. They can't be less restrictive than the Gig Harbor Municipal Code. That's what I was trying to say. So I apologize. So they can, they could limit, they can limit that, they can limit use within the homes, but then the, within their CCNRs. But we don't have that everywhere, right? I mean, that's, that's true of a lot of the newer subdivisions. A lot of the old subdivisions, those, the, the HOAs are long since defunct. Nobody even knows where the CCNRs are or what's in them anymore. And the officers have disbanded, you know, in many cases. So, you know, we run into that quite a bit. And, you know, obviously in, in Millville and Finnholm and places like that, you know, we don't have, there's not going to be any kind of HOA restrictions.
Could, could we do both, Carl? Could we allow like permitted in certain areas? But any additional services provided would require a conditional use permit? Because then neighbors would be able to have the input and say, hey, this is going to destroy the fabric of our neighborhood and and so on.
And when, when, what do you mean by additional services, I guess?
Well, the, you know, we're just wrestling with this, this specific thing we're talking about right now of, of that, that and this language, you know, that she wants to put in unless it's operated by the same, you know, not-for-profit agency. So, you know, the, the half-mile or quarter-mile restriction. She's saying that that shouldn't exist at all if it's being operated by the same agency.
Right.
What, what I'm asking is, so here's home A or transitional housing A and a half-mile away because, you know, let's just say that's what we're going to adopt is, you know, transitional place B. And then transitional place B wants to add some more services, but our, our ordinance would say, well, there has to be a half a mile away from where you are. She's saying you don't want to do that because that's actually inhibiting transitional services B's ability to do their job the easiest and most efficient way that they can. So if we, in other words, so we permit it at a half-mile for A, permit it a half-mile for B, but if B wants to add services, it requires a conditional use permit to expand their services.
Or to operate another permanent supportive, so to operate another supportive, permanent supportive housing or transitional housing, say, next door to, to site B, that would require the conditional use permit? Yeah, I mean, I, I guess we would be looking at that something like the use table that, that CTAC had has adopted. Where they kind of say, yeah, it's, it's, it's permitted slash conditional. And then there would be notes associated with that that would offer additional provisions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that, that, that could certainly, that could certainly be done or at least explored for sure.
I think that's a great idea because sometimes we set these ground rules and then we always got to be look at there's, there's always going to be things that don't quite work and we have to have a waiver process that kind of looks at them and gives us a chance to and go through another level of reviews. And I think your idea is a good one, Greg. I'm sure Carl can make that work. At least notionally. Greg, I wanted to say a couple of things, just so my way in. I'm okay with the quarter-mile limitation for the permanent housing and the temporary housing category. I'm, I think a half-mile for the emergency shelters is, is, is a really good idea. I wouldn't want those two functions lumped too closely together. And I think we should keep conditional use procedures and on all these facilities. I don't think that's a a negative. I think it would, it would protect the community from things happening without the, the neighbors knowing and the city knowing what's really going on. So that's kind of my feeling on those.
Okay, thanks.
In that first thought where we might have both, you know, including both the, the half-mile or quarter-mile for permanent supportive or transitional housing, and also utilizing the suggestion from Commerce about citing a, an additional services if it's run by the same nonprofit. So we would be requiring conditional use for that second service, if that were proposed, second or third or whatever it might be. Would we then be saying that for all supportive housing and all transitional housing, it would be permitted outright? The first time around? Or would that still be zone by zone, still could be, still could be a conditional use if it's in a particular zone? And then still would require another conditional use for additional services proposed? Did I, that makes sense or did I get myself tangled there?
I understood what you meant.
Okay.
I did as well.
So I, I just, here's, so here's, here's our last paragraph. We caution you against using a blanket conditional use procedure for these types of housing. A conditional use process can complicate permitting of facilities such as transitional housing that may have minimal impacts to the community. The ordinance does not create a clear path to permitting for these types of important facilities and could be a source of risk. Your ordinance should include a clear intent or purpose section as 1764020C states that conditional use approval or denial is based on what is deemed necessary or desirable and furthering the intent of the ordinance pertaining to the proposed development. So this is where she has talked to me about, you know, some activist group might be coming in and saying, you're, you're just trying to prevent these from being in your community. You're just, you know, you're just disguising them. So, but I think if we let them all, the conditional use permit, and I, I personally am not sure that that's the right way to go. I think we, it sounds like we would need to add language that, you know, just talks about purpose and intent, Carl. That, you know, with talking about balancing the, you know, the character of our, you know, our, our historic town and, you know, the obvious need to provide these services and rah rah, we're on board with it and you know, whatever, whatever the right language is.
But then they referred us to the CTAC ordinance, and it's got all kinds of performance requirements on it for both facilities. I mean, it's, I, I'm not sure what she's talking about by referencing us to that particular ordinance because they don't, they don't have a permit, I don't think, Carl, flat-out permit for anything. Unless I misread that matrix.
No, I, I think that's correct, Commissioner Salters.
Yep.
Well, I think that statement's important. That's a great idea to get that statement clear. That kind of covers our behinds at least. It says we're not trying to block it. We just want to make sure that the, the local, the residents have some degree of knowledge of what's going on and protection.
By statement, Commissioner Salters, do you mean the, the intent, an intent statement?
Yeah.
For each type? Yeah, okay.
Like Greg, like the commission, the chairperson was saying.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I could live with that, you know, all, all being conditional use under with that. Well, how do the rest of you feel? Because I'm, I'm with, I'm with Commissioner Cross. We, we need to make some decisions on this tonight and, and move along.
I'm good with that, Greg.
I'm, I'm comfortable with it as well, Greg. Me too.
So am I.
Okay.
So that decision was all as conditional use, just the, the way we have it?
Yeah.
Okay, so no change there?
Yo, whereas Gig Harbor has always valued, you know, public input on, you know, important decisions for the community, you know, whereas and so on. Or wherever it belongs. It may not belong in a whereas statement.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, Katrina and I'll put our heads together on that, try and figure out the best way to get that documented because I, I, I see the point and I think it's a very good point.
Okay.
And then I think I'm hearing then that we're, we're liking the idea of, of keeping a half-mile for the emergency uses, but maybe going to a quarter-mile for the transitional and supportive housing with the caveat that we would incorporate the suggested language that Commerce has given us. And also with the caveat that any additional uses would be, well, they would automatically be conditional uses, I guess, in that, in that case, right? So that doesn't, that, that doesn't really matter.
Yeah, I think I'm the outlier here. I, I, I am, I'm more comfortable being more restrictive now with the, with the possibility of loosening it later. And one of the other commissioners made the point, especially in something, you know, and I don't know what the size is, but X number of occupants or larger. I, I really feel strongly about not having two facilities separated by a quarter-mile. I just don't, I don't, I don't think that's good for our community.
I agree.
I can go either way.
If we want to start at a half-mile and have a option to go forward, that's a lot, that's a long distance, though. I mean, half-mile in Gig Harbor is halfway across town, depending on how you, how you near it, where you start counting.
No, not really.
Well, and keep in mind also that we limit the number of emergency and emergency housing and emergency shelters to one in the current ordinance. Let me read that language really quick. Down here. No more than one continuously operating emergency shelter and no more than one continuously operating emergency housing facility shall be in operation at the same time in city limits. So right away, as far as that type, those uses are concerned, we would, we don't, we're not, I guess we, we don't really have to worry about the quarter-mile, half-mile issue. It's really quarter-mile, half-mile for transitional and permanent supportive that we're, that we're really talking about. And I wonder, do we even have the half-mile? I kind of forgot about that. So, sorry if I got us down the wrong. So, oh, so what we say is that no emergency shelter or emergency housing facility may be located. Oh, okay. So that does make sense because there still are two uses there, right? So no emergency shelter or emergency housing facility may be located within a half-mile of another emergency shelter or emergency housing facility. So if you have one of each, they can't be within a half-mile of each other. So that's one point. The next point is that no emergency housing facility or emergency shelter shall be located within a half-mile of permanent supportive housing or transitional housing units.
Are there occupancy limitations on transitional and permanent supportive?
We have the maximum occupancy load of a permanent supportive housing unit and transitional housing unit shall not exceed one person for every 200 square feet of habitable space as established in table 1,405 of the 2018 International Building Code.
200 square feet per person?
No, 200, so per, yes, that's right. Yes, 200 square feet of habitable space per person. And that's according to the, to the IDC. So we're pulling that right out of the international building codes occupancy requirements for, I'm assuming that that's for single-family houses.
I wouldn't have any trouble with quarter-mile distances if there were an occupancy limit of six for residents for building as in the six-pack adult family homes. No, I, it's always been my understanding, the kind of facility we're talking about here is not what we would find in a residential community. So it's a, a much larger facility that might hold 15, 20, 30, 40 people. And that the 200 square feet we're talking about would include common use areas as they would distribute that as living space available to occupants. Is that correct, Carl?
Well, actually, so let me back up just a little bit then. So if we're talking about like a large facility, the maximum allowed number of dwelling units, and so that would be each unit in a, you know, in, in that Everett example, let's just take that one, would not, cannot exceed the number of dwelling units that would be allowed under the zoning classification adopted for the property. So we'd be looking at density, just like we would for any apartment building. For instance, we were looking at, you know, the number of dwelling units that can, that could be cited there based on the zoning. And then we take it, this next step to the actual unit. So that 200 square feet of habitable space is just within each of those units that are in that building. Or if it's a single-family home that's been converted to one of these, or if it's in in, in an existing apartment building where they want to put in permanent supportive housing in a couple of the units, then that 200 square feet would apply. We also say that the maximum occupancy of a bedroom within a permanent supportive housing unit or transitional housing unit shall be minimum of 70 square feet per person. In determining this occupancy limit rounding to the nearest whole number shall not be allowed. So we take it all the way down to the bedroom in the case of a single-family home where maybe you want to just put a whole bunch of beds in one room or something like that, that might not be allowed.
So can we can we get consensus or a majority on perhaps the concept of depending on the size of the facility, it has to be further spread apart? You know, and whatever that breakpoint might be? Or are you all comfortable with just saying size doesn't matter? A quarter-mile is far enough?
Well, I, I would concur that if we're talking about a somewhat larger facility that might hold eight or 10 people or more, that I would prefer it be further. Uh, that I, I would prefer be further apart from similar facilities.
Well, we're only talking about two facilities in the entire city right now, the way the ordinance is written. So I'm going back to what Greg said is, uh, stay with the. The, you know, longer, uh, limit there of a half mile. Leave it at that with some indication in the ordinance or background materials that, uh, that can be changed if the need changes in the future.
And the limit of two is only for emergency shelters and emergency housing. It does not apply to the, um, permanent supportive housing or transitional.
Correct.
Okay.
So that, that's what I was directing my thought, comments though, to John is that, that specifically. Because those, those permanent supporting hazard, they, they can be, you know, much bigger than six people in a house. Um, ala the Everett example, so. Um. Well, let me just throw out there then a suggestion that, that if it's six or less. It's quarter mile separation. If it's greater than six, it's a half a mile separation.
That's reasonable. That's what I was trying to say.
Okay. So say, can you, can you, can you run that by me one more time then? So just so I make sure I get this right. So if we're saying, so we're saying occupancy of six or less. Is. Um. They can be within a quarter mile of each other.
Minimum separation of a quarter mile.
More than six. Minimum of a half mile. And this is just for. Permanent supportive housing and transitional housing, right? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
For, uh, emergency housing, we're sticking with a, with a half mile between, between the two that would potentially be operating within the city at any one time. Okay.
So is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
Uh, and then no change to, uh, no change. So we're gonna go with a conditional use across the board as, as it's already been. Uh, and we are want, want, we want to incorporate, um, Commerce's suggested language. About, um, if they're operated by the same entity. Uh, then they could apply for another conditional use. And preempt. That, um. That quarter or half mile. Or that occupancy, that occupancy limitation on permanent supportive and transitional housing.
Yep.
Yeah.
Use our language, but we know you can make it better.
Oh yeah, I'll make it way better. Um, okay, that, that all sounds pretty good to me. If everybody else is feeling good about it.
Yeah.
So if we pass this on, then with that. Not require the extension that you were talking about before.
No, we don't have time. We'll still need to, uh, we'll still need to pass the extension. Regardless, because we still have to get this to council. Anyway, uh, also if we're gonna make changes, um. If we're making changes to this ordinance, we, we feel pretty strongly that we should hold another. Public hearing, uh, with planning commission before we move this up to the city council.
But that should be a pretty quick one.
Likely. There hasn't been a lot of interest in this subject, so. From the community.
Well, I don't think we got any comments last time.
Well, that being the case, could you say a few words about the criteria you use for determining whether or not we need a public hearing?
Well, because we're making, uh, because we're making changes to an ordinance that we put out to the public, uh, for public comment. Um, and. Planning Commission then held deliberations on, uh, on what they would have heard from the public had anybody, uh, commented. Um. That, that new, the new ordinance with new language in it should all, should, the, the public should have another opportunity. To be heard at this body, even though there will be another opportunity for them at the council as well. But it, it, all things, you know, we have to keep things fair, even though we know that there's not a lot of. Um. Not a lot of, uh. Interest out there. It's just the, it's the, it's the right thing to do as far as the public process goes to make sure that people get another opportunity. To influence your recommendation because your recommendation, the, the council puts a lot of weight on your recommendation when it comes up to them.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I think the next steps chair, uh, would be if you're, if the, if the commission is comfortable with this. Uh, staff will go and make changes based on what we heard today to the, to the ordinance. Um, and, uh, bring that back, you know, sort of a red line, I think a red line version. Uh, maybe a red line version and a clean version. Um, and schedule a public hearing, uh, for, for the next opportunity that we have for you all to, to review this. Um, and then out of that. Um, hopefully we could just get a, a, a recommendation that same evening after the, after the hearing and then move it on.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm.
Okay. Um. Other business, next meeting. Is a, the next extra meeting, uh, on the 31st of this month.
There's one on the 24th and the 31st, right? Or am I wrong?
No, nothing on the 24th.
Okay.
Brian, it'll just be the 31st. That's, that'll be the extra meeting. Uh, and that meeting will be, uh, on short-term rentals. So. That'll be the meeting where we, uh, have compiled all of the commissioners' thoughts. Um, on short-term rental and potentially, uh, depending on what we've heard from you all, we, we may. Uh, take a stab at, um, at a. Sort of a skeleton, uh, of a, of an ordinance. Um, with, you know, maybe there, a- and, and within that, maybe there's a few options where we've heard. Differing opinions on a certain item and we would just include both of those and those would be sort of decision points maybe for the commission. We're gonna try and craft it in such a way that it makes it easy for, uh, commissioners to have a. Um, a fruitful conversation. And hopefully we can polish, we can polish it up in real time at that study session. Uh, have it up on the screen maybe and. Um, as commissioners are deliberating, we can just make changes to it right there and hopefully come up with something that everybody agrees with, or at least. Sort of agrees with. And then, uh, and then we can move, maybe move forward to a public hearing potentially.
And, and can we do that meeting in person?
At the moment, uh, we're not able to, even though we are, uh, we have removed the mask mandate here at City Hall. Um, the only, I'm, we've been directed that the only. Public meetings that will be in person are going to be city council. And that does not include their study sessions. Their study sessions are still going to be virtual. Uh, and the reason for that is that, um, our, uh, the IT. Um. The. IT equipment, the, um, I'm losing the words here.
Audiovisual.
Audiovisual, thank you. Yeah, the AV equipment, uh, that's supposed to be upgraded in, uh, in the chamber and in the, um. In the, uh. Conference rooms A and B where we would normally meet, uh, either one of those two places. Is still, it's a, a lot of the, a lot of the equipment is on back order unfortunately right now. And we're having a really, like everybody having a heck of a time. Getting this stuff because it's either. In shipping containers someplace or the chips aren't made or, uh, our IT. Um. Technician or, uh, manager, uh, Keith. Has just been pulling his hair out over this, trying to get, they just keep on telling him, well, it's gonna be another three weeks, another three weeks, another three weeks. And the idea is that when we start meeting in person again, we wanna make sure because we, we've gotten, um, so much public support and input. Um, as a result of meeting online like this. Uh, we're getting, you know, a lot of jurisdictions are finding that there's, um, more people engaged, although we have nobody here tonight, I'll say. But nor, but we are getting more, you know, people engaged, uh, in a lot of public meetings. We wanna make sure that when we meet in person, we have, people have the ability, um, to. Uh, join the meeting virtually. As, and you know, have the option of joining the meeting virtually and also, uh, that commissioners. Uh, would also have the option of joining the meeting virtually if they're not comfortable meeting in person.
Okay. Commissioner Krosak, you had a comment?
Yeah, um, in, in speaking about other business, uh, I don't know how many of you live in North Gig Harbor. But since they've, uh, started the construction off Harborview. The traffic circle here has turned into a nightmare. And, uh, my fear is with the, uh, number of, uh, additional development that has been projected for this area. That we're looking then at the long-term future of North Gig Harbor when we look at the. Traffic backups that are occurring there right now. I am wondering if maybe we can have, uh, at some time in the future, it doesn't have to be, you know, next few meetings. Have a discussion about how we assess the traffic impacts when new development is approved.
Yeah, okay.
Oh. I hope you're wrong, John, but man, oh man, working your way through that traffic is a pain in the neck.
Well, just in the way of illustration, there was recently a proposal to put a business park and restaurant complex. Across from the hospital. That will generate an additional 900 trips a day. Most of those will go through the traffic circle and there are two subdivisions. That are being proposed right now that will generate over a thousand trips a day. And again. Most of those will go through the traffic circle. And of course that traffic circle is also the access for most of Gig Harbor to the hospital.
There's also a, an apartment complex in there. Yeah, I think there's an opportunity for public input. That's being proposed on Burnham Drive. On the way up the hill and they, I think it's 80?
Eighty-two, eighty-two units, I believe.
Yeah, so that's going to add, uh, you know, a significant number of cars, um. Most of whom will probably use that traffic circle to access the highway or. Um. Parts north. So, yeah, you know, we're still, you know, I, I, if you follow this stuff on Nextdoor especially. Um, unfortunately, the, the current. Planning Commission and the current city council has taken some serious heat. Um, when the, the responsibility lies at the feet of, um. The prior administrations and, and, um. There's a reason they all got voted out of office. Um. And there's a reason the more, the first thing that the new mayor and, and council did was, you know, put a, a, a building moratorium in place. But at that time, there were 1,200 housing units that could, that are already in the pipeline that could not be turned off. So, um. Yeah, it's a problem. And if you don't know, the city is working feverishly with the contractor to. Uh, foreshorten the time of the Harborview one lane. Closure or one-way closure, um, by hopefully about two months. They're trying to provide a financial incentive to the contractor to do that. So, um, they're trying to move that up to the end of May instead of the end of July. Um, so hopefully they will have some success with that. And, um, yeah, you gotta give yourself some extra time.
One other thing, if I might mention it, is when that business park across from the hospital. Uh, when that was, uh, when the, the report from Public Works came out. With that estimate of 900 cars per day or 900 trips per day, the, uh. Um. Comment from Public Works was that that would have no significant impact on, uh, transportation. And I found, I found that just astonishing.
Yeah, well, I think that, yeah, yeah, I don't think any of you were around when we did the, the traffic impact. Study that we spent. Gee whiz, months and months, Carl, uh, working through that beast. Um, as the planning commission and, and so. You know, it, it, it is interesting, um, all of that stuff is, and you know, Carl, correct me anywhere along the way here is. Is based on traffic projections, traffic studies, time at intersection. And, and all of those things are measured by somebody else. And so what the public works director, all he does is take a chart. Apply the amount of time you're expected to sit at, it, a given intersection and, and say whether or not it, it. Um, has a significant impact or not. It may well lengthen your. Your stay at the roundabout from 20 seconds to two minutes, but. Um, who, whoever the traffic gurus are, and I'm, I'm making up these numbers. You, you say that two, two minutes is, is no impact. Um, even though you used 20 seconds. So, um, the other thing I found fascinating along the way is that, that. Um, when a intersection already has a grade of F. If there, and this happened up when Fred Meyer was going in, um, even though, uh, the impact would make it worse. Um. And everyone knew that it would make it worse since it was already an F. You can't be any worse than an F. And so the, the ultimate evaluation was it won't change. The grading of the, uh, of the intersection because. There is a provision, I believe, Carl, that if it does have a significant, like if it's a C and it drops to a D, the developer has to help. Um, fund the traffic improvements to, to maintain. Um, the various areas around them at, at their current service level. So it's.
Yeah, there's some mitigation.
Yeah, it's a messed up system.
Yeah, it's not a, it's definitely not a perfect system. Uh, and you're right about that, that we have a model, um, that's used and that model is maintained by. Um. A consultant that's on retainer with the city. And so whenever we get traffic impact. Um, traffic impact analyses. Uh, from developers, we send that off to, um, to that consultant to run it through the model. And then they, they tell us if there is, you know, where, where the problems are and what mitigation. Would be necessary in order to keep, um, either keep things status quo or make things better.
So anyway, probably didn't make you feel better, John, but, um. At least now you know, maybe.
No, that, that's, that's, that's good information, but I still think at some point in time, it's worth having that discussion.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, I've, I've made a note of that chair as well. Um, and you know, maybe that's something we could look at down the road and, and maybe we could have our. Um, our traffic engineer come and have a discussion with, uh, with the planning commission to help. Explain some of this better since, you know, he's the, he's the expert. Um, and, uh, you know, and maybe listen to your thoughts and concerns and. You know, that's always, that's always useful. So, uh, I think that would be, that would definitely be a good use of time.
Yeah.
I, I would say, John, that it's probably been about three years ago that I was aware of it. The subdivision going in in that area and it had a lot of public input. Specifically for the traffic impact around those traffic circles. And, and for whatever reason. That subdivision was approved. Uh, and, and of course, the, the traffic in those areas have gotten far worse over the last three years. So unfortunately, my, 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 my thought on it is kind of like Greg, what Greg said, an F is an F, just get used to it.
Yeah.
Unfortunate, but I, when, when I look at it from any kind of an engineering perspective, I don't see a viable solution.
There, there isn't really anything you can do with that circle.
Hey Michelle, I, oh yeah, I gotta give you some inputs tomorrow. Hey, Michelle, I, oh, yeah, I gotta give you some inputs tomorrow, if that's okay, on the short term rental, I'm not quite there yet, is that gonna work for you? They're doing today, right?
Carl's nodding yes.
Yeah, we can accept that, of course. You'll get marked down, you'll get marked down, though, for for it being tardy.
Yep, but it's gonna be so damn good that you're. Thank you.
What, what um, we do have an absolute deadline, though, don't we, Carl, that it has to get out to the public?
Yeah, next, uh, we have, well, we need to get it out on the twenty fourth, so. The idea was that if we got everything today, we'd have a week, you know, to for staff to kind of turn it around, but. Tomorrow, tomorrow is okay too, I want to make sure everybody gets their input in, I mean, there's only, there's only seven of y'all, so that's okay.
Okay. All right, well, that's our next meeting on the thirty first, and um, I I know. This meeting felt a little bit herky jerky and and, but this is the kind of thing that, to me, there um. I think we need to be really careful about the law of unintended consequences and try to think through all of the. All of the possibilities, it's easy to just um whitewash this and say that looks good enough, um. But but I think we need to be able to ask the tough questions and and think through these things very carefully. Uh, because once it's written, it's done. And and there's no turning back, so appreciate everybody's, you know. Thoughts about trying to say, well, you know, so you can what if things to death, but. Uh, on certain things, um, you gotta spend some time. About the practical outcomes, not just trying to imagine every every single possible what if, but. Uh, the reasonable ones that that may exist, so I appreciate everyone's work on that today. Otherwise, have a, enjoy a nice frosty cold green beer, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Have a good one, take care.
We need a motion.
Yes, yeah, wait, I, having said that, um, if there are no other thoughts, I'm willing to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned at six fifty two. Thank you very much.